Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order at six o'clock. Um, Mayor Urban is unable to be here tonight, so I'll be chairing on his behalf, although he is joining us in the Zoom gallery. Hello. Um, so, um, thank you for joining us for the committee of the whole meeting, our last meeting, um, before we take a brief recess until August twenty second. There is one amendment to the agenda, and that is item three A unfortunately did not make it into the folder before, um, the meeting, uh, before this afternoon, so we're going to be removing it from the agenda and we will add it on, um, to the August twenty second agenda. So if we can have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
A second.
Thank you. Um, all in favor? Thanks. Um, so, uh, motion to adopt the draft minutes from the regular meeting of June twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion from, uh, meeting of June twenty, twenty-three. A second.
Thank you. Any, um, comments?
None for me.
None for me either. Mayor Urban?
None for me.
Great. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Um, so motion to pay the open payables in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred ten dollars and ten cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the open payables of one hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and ten.
I'll second that motion.
No comments?
Good question. Six, one, three, seven, zero.
Uh, that is the mosquito rule.
And six, one, three, six, two.
Three, six, two. Uh, that is the purchase of the snow bucket and forks that was in the district's capital budget.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Yeah?
No.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Um, so next we have, um, elevator Yukon. I believe Jordan is with us and Zoom. To go over the housing accelerator fund on application, action plan.
Hey, guys. How's it going?
Good.
Um, cool. I'm just sorry. I'm just writing a email to Melanie while I'm listening to you guys. Quick agenda tonight. Um, so, yeah, thanks. Uh, based on our conversation of a couple of weeks ago, um, we had talked about, uh, putting a, an application forward for the housing accelerator fund. We kind of reviewed that program, um, and what the opportunity would be for Watson Lake at the last meeting and the direction there. Uh, we also talked about where council would like to see folk, uh, areas of focus. Um, and so we basically took that direction from council and created a, uh, a, a draft work plan. And did, I don't think you guys got this in your package though, so I can share it with you if you'd like, um, just on my screen. Zach, and, uh, you're probably seeing my email to Melanie.
Anyway.
Yeah, I'm actually.
In my YouTube. Sorry.
Jordan, your camera must be covered too. It looks like your coffee comes in front of it.
Oh, sorry. I plugged in my other camera, but it was covering up, uh, this one. Sorry about that.
Unless it was intentional.
Nope. Uh, this one just didn't plug in for some reason. I don't know why. Okay. Um, can you guys see what's up on my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, so, uh, our work plan is required to be submitted with your guys' application, and that's essentially what we've been working on. And in this, um, the information contained in this document will, will effectively be transposed to your application. Um, so this is basically the bulk of what you would, what we would be putting forward for our application. And I think at this time, we're just looking for council's feedback. Like, is this what we talked about? Is this, are you guys comfortable putting it forward? Um, and then I think like, that's more or less all the direction that I'll need to work with Cam to get the application completed. Um, I'll just make a caveat statement in here that, uh, the math is wrong. Uh, it's, it, I didn't do it as per their instructions. I was, so it's gonna change slightly, but this, this will basically be, give you like a really good idea of, of what this could look like. So I break, there's six total initiatives, which you can see here, and I've, here all, zoom in on those. Um, and you can, these are all broken down. Uh, these are all broken down, uh, into their each, each thing, which gives a description of each and how many units it'll create and everything else. And, uh, I think you guys will be forwarded this plan after a meeting. You can have a read through that, but I'll just, I'll just focus on the summary for the purposes of our discussion. Um, so essentially six initiatives, uh, and I'll just list these, and then I'll talk about kind of each. Actually, I'll just go through each. So the new home construction grant program, um, basically that was council's idea to help people with, uh, the costs of building a new home in Watson Lake. Um, and what we were, and, and again, there's, uh, you'll see here, there's a one to three year timeline, which is the time of the program, uh, that we need to demonstrate the results we hope to achieve within three years. And then they also want to see it more long-term, um, like a more long-term impact. And so actually like working through this, I thought it gave Watson Lake kind of a nice vision for housing over the next ten years, but, um, we'll see. So the new home construction program, so, uh, assuming this is approved, I just said a start date of September twenty twenty-three, so who knows when money might come in, but just a provisional start date. And then we were targeting ten units, uh, to work with ten, ten different people, or sorry, ten people who want to build. Um, and I get there's a whole application criteria, which we're not going to get into now, but essentially having money for ten, ten units, like whoever wants to build them, whatever we come up with for the application, that's still to be determined. But essentially like this is what we're, we're, we're asking for is, um, uh, money for ten units. And so at forty thousand dollars a unit, um, there's four hundred thousand dollars in half revenue. And I just put a five hundred thousand dollar budget to this program because there's some policy development and marketing and promotion that needs to come along with it. You'll see how this, this all evens out in the end though. Um, so you'll notice there like we're not getting enough revenue to run this program, but, um, other, other places we're getting a lot more revenue than it would take to run the program. Um, incentivize the conversion of non-residential to residential. So this isn't one we had really discussed in depth, but I was reviewing a number of different applications, uh, from different municipalities, and I saw this one on there quite often, and I thought it was a good fit as well. Um, for the town of Watson Lake, it's kind of, it's similar to the grant program, except, um, this one wouldn't focus on new housing instruction. It would focus on incentivizing the conversion of non-residential to residential. So, um, you could think of this like things like secondary suites, carriage homes, uh, not like under, underutilized and underperforming properties. I know council's been talking about that a lot. And maybe we could dangle a carrot to get some people to do something, uh, with their properties, and we want them to convert it to residential. Um, so ten units under that, um, again, there's just a bit of work that needs to be done on the front end, policy work. Um, and so there's an additional cost there. Revised the town zoning bylaws to remove, uh, barriers to missing middle housing. Uh, again, this is this alliance with the program, missing middle is essentially, uh, secondary suites, carriage houses, duplexes, triplexes, basically non-single family and non, uh, uh, high-density housing. That's like what we call, what they call missing middle. And, um, this is a, this is, uh, in, and a relatively straightforward thing we can do, and I already, I can hear the people groaning inside of their head like, I don't want to do the zoning bylaw again, like, I get it. Um, but you can see the payoff for this, uh, program. So for example, we, we would review the bylaw and make sure it's very conducive to development, making sure that there's, there's no barriers. We could look at things like, um, automatically permitting certain types of, um, uh, construction and that kind of thing. And so I really don't know at this point, but we're hoping this can bring on twelve additional units, and it's, it's kind of a a lower cost, uh, to do it. Um, so you'll see here the number, it's about, I, I said a hundred thousand dollar budget to do it, and it, it could provide four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenue, um, because you get forty thousand dollars per unit, right? Um, so if we say that by doing this, we want to unlock the potential to bring on twelve more units, then that's what we're asking for money for. Um, action four is to create an action plan that addresses barriers to lending and mortgages. Uh, this is something I heard from you guys that, uh, a significant barrier right now for people that want to own a home is that they can't get a mortgage in Watson Lake. And I think there's a number of things to that. Um, I think that it's hard for banks to get appraisals. Uh, I think the marketing of the local real estate sector needs improvement. Um, I think there's a lot of tentacles there, but basically if people can't get mortgages, that's a huge problem. Um, and I just, I don't think we can ignore that. Um, and so that's a smaller part of this. Um, but we're hoping that can help for people immediately within the next year, but like the impact within ten years, if we, if we can solve this problem, who knows? If fifty, maybe that could lead to fifty more construction units, and that's kind of what I'm thinking, because that's such a huge barrier, guys. Um, so related to number four is number five, creating an action plan to improve promotion and marketing of the local real estate sector. Um, so this, this is like you guys don't have a real estate agent, uh, in town property guys doesn't really operate there. Um, and, and similar type services, and so it's, there's a dysfunction in the market, um, in terms of connecting buyers and sellers of real estate. Like you guys know how it is, like you basically need to know somebody if you want to buy a house in Watson Lake. And so for people like your awesome rec programmer who I was talking today and who just moved there, who may want to buy a house, um, we want to keep those people in our community, right? And, uh, and if they can't, if there's no functioning real estate market, um, that becomes very difficult when you're looking at someone who's thinking about taking a job in Watson Lake or would like to move their family to Watson Lake. Um, it's basically like there's a huge hill to climb to even find out what kind of housing might even be available or land, or if they could build a house or whatever. Um, and the sixth part of this is just to hire a staff person to oversee and implement the half, uh, action plan and initiatives, um, essentially like getting salary dollars for three years, two and a half years. And, um, um, overseeing that, it doesn't, in here, like, I don't think it really leads to units directly, other than they like, uh, they oversee all these other programs that are going to lead to units. Um, so, you know, but if they're able to accomplish like helping along a functioning real estate sector and reducing barriers to lending and mortgages, they're going to create a lot of housing in the future, um, because that is, those are some serious problems to solve. So, um, basically on my, my back of the napkin math, uh, a shorter term vision, one to three years with the housing accelerator fund actions and action plan, we're hoping to create forty-six units, uh, forty-six new units within the next three years, and then a longer term vision for ten years is something like two hundred units, two hundred units in the next ten years. Um, which I think, and this is where I thought, wow, and that's like a pretty cool vision for housing in Watson Lake, like it's a lot of houses. Um, but also ten years is a long time. Um, I, and based on like what I've put forward here, the budget, um, for all these programs is one point four two five million dollars. And the expected revenue from the housing accelerator fund is one point five six million dollars. So this could change slightly because I said my math's not right here. Um, but I would just say to council, like, I will always structure in a way where the expected revenue would be more than the program costs to implement. Um, and you know, that's essentially what your application is looking like at this point, and I'll just open it up for discussion and questions.
Thanks, Jordan.
My, uh, the number three, that it revised sounding zoning bylaw, remove missing for the middle, uh, missing middle. Our current residential zoning covers, like if you were to swap out from, say, the mobile housing, um, you can swap it to R one, you can build a duplex on that according to our zoning bylaw as it is. Um, so I don't think we'd have to redo the entire zoning bylaw or reopen it and rego. It would be a simple like, if you want to swap your law to this, you can. Um, originally, when I first heard this, it was the first several, what was it like sixteen units or something like that weren't eligible, but then after that, you, somebody else could get funding, and it was like, well, the sixteen people that had their, you know, um, had their paperwork in order are almost getting penalized by having their stuff in order first. So you wait for the sixteenth person to apply for it, then it won't be the seventeenth to actually get the funding. So we got to figure out a way to make, because that was an issue before. I don't see it right here, but we talked about it earlier. Um, is there any way, Jordan, that you see this being, I want to say more streamlined, but more, how would you access it from the town? Would you just like walk into the town office and say, hey, I'm here to apply for this? And then say, well, here's your, here's your form. Like, how would that look? What would that look like?
Um, thanks, Councilor Slager. Yeah, and that's, that's, it's, it's into the details where I was hoping maybe, because honestly, we don't have it figured out yet. Uh, but I, I think the principles we've talked about is, is fair, equitable and equal access and opportunity for every resident of Watson Lake. So, um, I think we can say that, you know, there will only be a certain amount of money, um, you know, for this program, and, and that's okay. You know, I, I don't think everybody in Watson Lake is looking to build, but certainly like if we're successful in, in getting these funds, I think it's, it's only a good thing. Um, and your comment, uh, upfront about, uh, you know, the sixteenth person gets it. Those numbers are incorrect, and that's my mistake. But it's, it's, it's not exactly like that too. And so I, I think like if we're successful in getting this funding, we have to build the program, and that's where council's going to need to come back together and provide us that like good direction. So we can build on those principles of equal access and opportunity to this, to this funding, and, um, I, I think Mayor Urban was championing this, and, and really it's just a kick, a kick in the pants. Uh, Cam likes to say kicking the training wheels off, whatever, to, to get housing started, and, um, and you know, uh, we'll do our best to, to ensure that it's, it's fair and equitable for everybody. I don't have those details yet, though, Councilor Slager, I'm sorry.
Is there, uh, sorry, to interrupt you, Jordan, um, is there, is there anything in there that, yeah, would provide stacking, let's say, LFN, so you wanted to build? If, if somebody wanted, uh, because it, housing, housing is, everyone needs housing, so, um, is there anything in, any sort of stacking provision in there that says like, if you work with your local, uh, First Nation band that you could access even more money for housing? Is there anything like that that you've come across or no?
Yeah, so, so I would just, I, I would go back to, uh, this program's meant to be an incentive, so not just a, a, a grant funding program like, hey, where you apply and you get the money. The town should actually be able to make a bit of revenue off this as well, uh, for engaging in this program. Um, with respect to the First Nation, uh, there is a specific category for partnerships with First Nation. Um, and, and I would just say like, uh, I, I think the funders would like to see that, but understanding that not everybody's in a position to do, to partner on a project like that. Um, you know, so we don't have to, uh, but yeah, like, it's, it's there, and I think, you know, I would just say like it would be a, probably a stronger application if there was some sort of cooperation with LFN. But, um, it's, I would just say too, it's not an, it's not an, it's not necessarily the easiest thing to partner on at this point.
I think the time crunching part of it, because our application has to be in so quickly.
Yeah.
That we wouldn't have time to, yeah, get them involved.
I would certainly, I think, one, to just to pick up on that, Councilor Slager, like you certainly encourage them to apply themselves, because they would be eligible as well to, to take hold of this funding and, and get some funding into the community for their own activities.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just one last thing. Sorry. I'll just say about the zoning bylaw, uh, it, it's not, and it's not a rewrite at all. Um, this one's really good bang for buck. Um, and, and I, I just saw it in a lot of applications, and I guess like I was on the phone with Jillian, who's our Yukon contact for this program, and I was asking what kind of projects are getting funded and where she's seeing success in applications, and she informed me like where, uh, applications are sticking really close to the goals of the housing accelerator fund, um, they're getting a lot of success. And so this is why you see a bit of this language that we've never really discussed before, but that you would find within the program. Um, and I'm just really trying to closely align it. Um, I think once we get the money through the door, like that's really my concern. Um, I think there'll be opportunity to change it after. If we say, oh, well, this makes more sense to partner with LFN now, I, I do think there'll be an opportunity for that. It's not a guarantee, but it, that's my sense.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think that that's a really good, strong starting point, and I think that it, um, pretty good picture of all of the things that we discussed at the, like the points that we brought forward at the last meeting. Um, Mayor Urban, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't have too much to add, other than I think it looks great, and I was just gonna add on to maybe Jordan's recent comment about once we have the money, being able to, you know, utilize it in different avenues and then trying to develop partnerships. You know, I think the, uh, the action plan as it stands looks, looks great. And I guess the question would be, uh, what is, what are other municipalities doing to try and get this fund? Like you mentioned, some of the bigger cities are trying to get this, and a lot of their action is around, um, you know, utilizing space and changing zoning and things like that. So that's why it probably ties into ours, Jordan.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, exactly. It's a lot of like removing barriers and, and reviewing policies and putting programs in place and that kind of thing. So, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and creating, uh, creating, uh, barrier-free development, right? So.
Yep.
I think it, I think it looks great.
Cool. And I'll just, uh, this is what, sorry, Mayor, uh, sorry, uh, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I'll just say like in, in the, uh, in the actual action plan, it, everything I discussed is broken down like this, so you can see it just in a more granular form, just FYI. That's good.
But, um, I was just gonna ask what action you need from us on this right now, if any.
Um, just to approve it in principle, um, and, uh, we do need a council resolution to submit our application. It could come a little bit later. Uh, but if we can show back in the minutes that the applications are, or you guys agree to bring it forward to your regular meeting, um, that'll be good direction for us to, uh, continue.
Well, just because we're not having another meeting until August twenty-second.
That's okay. I think if, if you can vote on it here, uh, just agreeing to bring it forward to the regular meeting for a vote, uh, that would be good enough direction for us.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
Make the motion, then. Uh, I don't word it. Um, I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the housing accelerator fund initiative. What's that? In principle, thank you.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you were tabled to August twenty-second.
I'll be tabled to August twenty-second. Excellent.
Hey, by that time, we should have our application in, and, um, you know, if it changes at all, we'll, we'll keep you guys informed of any of the changes, but it shouldn't change much from what you see tonight.
Awesome. Well, thanks so much, Jordan.
Okay, no worries. Have a good rest of your meeting, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, so moving on to the policing report, um.
Your worship, just for the record, Sergeant Propper had a family matter that came up tonight, so he's not able to attend, but he just wanted to present his May report, and he will forward the tomorrow, the June report, which he was gonna bring in person tonight.
Okay.
And, um, and he gives us regrets for the issue that came up.
Maybe he can join us in, um.
August twenty-second, yes.
Okay.
Before we give that name.
Sounds great. Thank you. All right, so then you're up. CAO report, please.
Well, the CAO report will be fairly short, meaning that I'm still sixty-five emails that I haven't opened since I've been gone over the last three weeks, but, um, I can give you an update that, um, we do now officially have a stopping vacancy at the landfill. Um, our scale attendant has read a submit his resignation, so we've granted it advertised internally. And, um, based on, um, if we have submissions, if there is no suitable submissions, then it'll be advertised externally. Um, for your worship and myself, that we're at the, the July first Canada Day celebrations at, um, Yiddish Park, I think it was a very successful event. Um, I think, uh, we did very well flipping burgers, and I think we did come, uh, uh, eight hundred dollar profit on burger and hot dog sales. So, um, so that, the, by the, by the amount of burgers that we flipped, I guarantee there was people there eating them, so. Um, so that was good. Um, lots of good feedback. Of course, there's gonna be a few negative ones like always, but un- unfortunately, we're never gonna please everybody, but I do think it was a good event. Um, uh, Melanie really put, um, her best foot forward for her first event in Watson Lake, and she was really approaching all the different volunteer organizations to participate. Outdoor Rec really stepped up. Uh, they ran the archery booth, and then they had, at one time, there were seven of them there volunteering. Um, so, uh, we had some issues with sound systems and stuff, which we're, we're actually doing a debrief, and we're so, so learning things. I didn't know we've ever had issues there before, so it was a learning, it's a learning thing of forward. Melanie's already started on discover, excuse me, discovery day arrangements. We met a little bit today. And so that's, um, uh, moving forward as well, so should nice, because we're, we had a board about six weeks out, right? So, um, and, um, so that's discovery day weekend is the weekend of the, the twentieth, twenty-first, or nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first um, of August, so right before our next council meeting. And so that's moving ahead. I have a meeting on Thursday with Yukon government, uh, for an update on the infrastructure project. Um, it's currently at their legal department and finalizing review on it, but I have a meeting to get top to speed on it on Thursday. Um, Francis Avenue Extension, uh, tender closed on Thursday. So hopefully maybe by next Monday I'll have an update. I will provide an update to council when I do know something. Um, the lift station tender, uh, closes on July sixth, so that's coming quick as well. Um, you may have heard, we've had issues trying to get the pool open. Um, so I'm waiting on response from Yukon Government Environmental Health, and it's talking with us from tomorrow, but we did, um, we were able to, as of today, secure a new staff member who has current, is currently certified as a National Lifeguard. Um, uh, certification and who's unfortunately expiring in the next, probably two weeks. But there is a refresher court, uh, recertification court on the fourteenth, and that person will be going to Whitehorse for the recertification. Um, so that, so that, um, so one way or another, the pool will be rolling, um, by the end of next week. And, um, water slides, I don't know if you've seen, uh, advertisements or no, but based on the forecast coming over the next, uh, week, um, where the water slides are open starting tomorrow, uh, the water slide, I should say not slides. And I don't know if anybody's been up to Lucky Lake, but my granddaughter noticed on Friday when we were pulling back into town Friday morning that we have a new dock. And it's installed, our staff got it installed last week. Um, I don't know how eleven-year-old, when you have that much of a window, when you're driving down the highway, could pick out that there was a new ladder and a new dock. I was quite amazed, so, um, so that is a good thing. That was part of the capital budget as well, as you know, and it was ordered, and, uh, that was the CEF application for that, so. Um, nice to have that going. Uh, the other thing that's been out of my whole list in my debriefing with Shannon from her three weeks of acting, I'm, I'm very pleased to say that the shining star was Northern Lights Center. It is rolling very well with no issues, and they have very high attendance, which is really nice. So, um, some people are getting hung up on some of the ratings, because of people complaining there's a gravel driveway. How do you get a four-star rating in a gravel driveway? Well, annoying, so. But if that's all you gotta complain about, come on.
That's it. That was it. Um, so, so that is, that's moving ahead. Um,
the roof at the rec center is almost complete. They got hung up in the rain on, I don't know what night it was, Friday night. There was the big mo, big rain. Anyways, they, um, there's just trim left to do on it in the roof. As all capital projects that direct center will be complete. I don't have an update as to what, where the chalet's at. Um, but I will have it, and I will provide it to you as we go ahead. And. Um, well, and that leads me to the next thing, which really is an update, is the fact that, uh, Mike Kraus is no longer our community advisor. He's been reassigned, um, to a few other communities. But as of tonight, as you may see on the screen, uh, we have our new advisor, who I haven't been able to talk to yet, but Real and Lan, uh, let you introduce yourself, and welcome to Watson Lake.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Uh, yeah, I just started with, um, Community Affairs last week. Um, so I'll be working with all of you, and my other community peer information is mail. And my background is, uh, emergency management, so I came from the wildfire world and, uh, and now, um, kinda slipped my way into Community Affairs. Um, so, yeah, Cam, um, hoping to chat with you, uh, you know, maybe this week, and if not, um, fortunately, I'm away the next two weeks. Um, and I do hope to come to Watson Lake, uh, either in August or September, at the latest. Yeah, obviously, if there's anything, uh, just reach out.
Awesome.
It's, your worship, it's rather nice. He's coming from the emergency management planning side. On that side, so I'm sure he's gonna be very well tasked. Um, yeah, so welcome, and I will be a Dutch tomorrow, and, uh, we'll go from there, but yeah, thank you for tuning in tonight to introduce yourself.
Yeah, thanks, Cam.
Is that all?
That was it. Like I said, I'm three weeks away, and I'm, I never got three minutes from the last meeting yet, so.
Thank you. Alright, so, um, then we'll move on, um, to number seven, which is the admin report on the trailer demolitions. Um, so la, at the last meeting, there was a, an admin report that was brought forward that we, um, I guess, motion to table to this meeting. Um, speaking of further, uh, discussion about it, and also, um, we made some recommendations. Um, so I'll read the new one. Um, so, um, this is for landfill tipping fees for disposal of mobile homes. Uh, the purpose is to assist property owners who have been served cleanup orders on dilapidated, mil, dilapidated mobile homes or trailers by offering a payment plan for landfill tipping fees. The financial implications are that the projected tipping fees for the disposal of a mobile home or trailer will be approximately one thousand five hundred to two thousand dollars per mobile home. Um, strategic priority implications. By working with the property owners and finding a solution to meet cleanup order deadlines, we are supporting council's priority to improve the quality of housing stock in the community and potentially creating vacant lots where new homes can be built. These neglected homes present a safety hazard and possible fire danger. So the discussion on this is, um, I, I just kinda said some of this, but at the June twentieth, twenty-three council meeting, the bylaw was presented, or sorry, bylaw department presented an admin report with a recommendation to waive the landfill tipping fees for the property owners who have been served cleanup orders on dilapidated mobile homes due to the property owners expressing that the cost was too much for them to afford. The cost to, the cost to demolish and remove said mobile homes has been quoted between twelve to fifteen thousand dollars by local contractors, which does not include landfill tipping fees. Council was not in support of the recommendation and asked bylaw to present another recommendation for consideration. So, there were two, um, recommendations, um, attached to this. Um, the first one is that council allow property owners to pay tipping fees and accumulated interest on a monthly payment plan set over a specific term, or option number two, which is that council allow property owners to pay tipping fees on a monthly payment plan set over a specific term and waive the interest.
Like, it's your worship, and there would be option three, and that is to not approve.
Yeah, right. So. Thoughts?
Story, what was option three there, Cam?
It would, your worship, it would be to not approve either of the first two options.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so because I wasn't here for the other discussion, what was the sticking point?
Oh, okay, so, um, I'll read you the options from the original.
I was just reading that, actually, and then it had like, it would waive it with a caveat to have, uh, something built, then it's, it was up the new one. That's the old one, right? So the old one was that you would have a caveat where you'd have to rebuild something, then it was just to waive them uh, completely in tipping fees, right?
So it was that mayor and council agreed to forgive landfill tipping fees for this, for the disposal of specified demolished mobile homes with a caveat that will allow the town to recover cost plus penalty if development conditions are not met within a specific timeframe, or the owner puts the property up for sale within a specific timeframe to increase opportunity for further housing development. And the, and the other option was that mayor and council agrees to forgive landfill tipping fees for the disposal of demolished mobile homes.
And I think the problem with that was, was that, uh, we didn't wanna set a precedent of just because then everybody would want no tipping fee.
Well, nobody can afford to.
Also, with the disposal rate of between twelve and fifteen thousand, how are they usually like, how are they gonna pay for that? Like, so we forgive their tipping fees, but like, they're gonna build something and pay for the like, you know what I mean? If they can't afford the tipping fees, which is by a percent of the cost of doing it.
Original report stated that the, the purpose of, of this was to, um, creating vacant lots where new housing can be created. Well, I mean, if you can't.
Afford to get rid of it.
Then I know what, what development can we expect from that property?
Yeah.
So, anyway, we just, I think it was, um, a precedent that we should be setting.
No, I agree, I agree, one percent.
And, yeah, sorry, your worship, and actually, there would be option four. Um, and I wasn't around when this was going on, fortunately, but option four would be like, we'll go with option three, and that would be not to proceed and allow, and then have counts of bylaw enforce a cleanup order, which then in town, then the town would do the cleanup and would go on the taxes. And then it would be paid off with interest. It really falls into a similar.
Sorry, I, I hear what you're saying, but can you just explain a little bit more what that would look like versus, um, this one right here? Versus the monthly payment plan or whatever?
Well, it, because when we do a cleanup order, it goes against, it goes as a tax lien on the property. So then the homeowner is not allowed to sell the property unless the tax lien's paid off. And then, and.
Sorry, is that not what this one says here with the, sorry, that was from the original one? Um, it's just kinda weird, you know, so I.
No, this is where you're forgiving.
Okay.
The forgiving, the, the tipping fees altogether. If, if we did a cleanup order, it, it would be no different than a few other properties that the municipalities have cleanups ordered, and that was before I started, but, um, um, there was two other properties where cleanup orders were enforced, and the cost, the cost of having them was added to the taxes as a tax lien. So.
So they, they were.
They pay for everything, so that costs, if it costs twelve thousand dollars to clean the property, then that cost would go on the taxes. And then the homeowner can either make installment payments on their taxes, but the tax penalty still builds, but it forms a tax lien on the property, so they can't just sell the property unless that debt's paid for, because if there is a debt on this, on our books, it, they could sell the property still, right? If we did it. Sell the property, and we could, the municipality could end up having an outstanding debt of ten thousand dollars that wasn't paid, and they made, they moved on and sold their property, right?
So, see, because that's what I'm getting the problem with, is we can't afford the two thousand dollar tipping fees. Like, how are they gonna afford?
What, and also who's gonna demolish it? Like, I mean, because that doesn't.
That's what I mean, like, are they gonna afford a different company to do that?
Yeah, and if, if the municipality, if we chase an under bylaw maintenance enforcement, you know, we don't, we currently, right now, we don't have, we could do it, but we, we mean, we're pulling all our people from other lines of work, so what we would do would be contract the work out to a contractor, like, and homeowner, and that would go, that, those costs, any of our costs to end up the property would be put as a tax lien, which would guarantee the municipality will get our money. But if they don't pay their taxes after the X number, you know, or make payments, then it goes to taxing process where that we would have the option to take the title. You know, and so I just wanted to throw that other option out there, because, you know, it's like, you know, we're not hemmed in one way or the other, right?
I mean, that seems to make the most sense to me, just because then also you know that it's getting done, and that it's, and within a certain timeframe. As well.
Cleanup order and the taxing, you mean?
Yeah.
Like, then you know, like, it will get done, right? Like, I think so, too. I like that.
I'm sure it's gonna cost the municipality money and extra output that she, like, when we had to do it, but there is, there is properties that definitely need it, and one of the properties has already had a cleanup order done and had that done, and now property's back to the same state, and bylaw's been working on agreements to get it better, but some of these other properties that, um, bylaw's talking about are properties have been derelict for years, right? And the people, the, they have, people haven't lived in in the years, but yet they're the ones that are saying, oh, we don't wanna lose the property, we wanna build something new. Well, you haven't upkept the property for X number of years now that the roof's caved in, right? So, you know, and we need, we need to get to that point where there's a line drawn in the sand.
Yeah, that's right.
Other, I must commend bylaw on trying to be creative to work with people, but it's not, it's not, also, it's not our issue that we, we shouldn't be the one that is trying to chase, find them a suitable contractor for the right price and do all those things, right? You know, if somebody really wanted to get their property to that state, they would take the initiative to actually find somebody.
Yeah.
I was thinking, sorry, I was thinking that, uh, you know, there's, there's multiple cases here. It's not just one individual case, and the process is, like you're saying, Cam, is to go through the proper processes of serving the cleanup order, tax lien, et cetera, et cetera. And it's not, if it was an individual case, and they wanted to present some options for payments because they couldn't afford the payment, that'd be one thing. But there's multiple situations here, so we have to follow with what our processes are.
That's what I think, too.
So, I guess if we, because that isn't in the submit report, do we need to have another one of these come back to council, or can we just make a motion?
You can make the motion, your worship, and yes, uh, Mayor Irvin, I, I agree, and if, if it was some, and even in these situations, out of these numerous properties that bylaw's been dealing with, if they were willing, if they really wanted, they could come to council, plead their case, and I'm sure council would listen to them, but to do a carte blanche thing for everybody, it's opening Pandora's. Right? Because then we get somebody that's in an industrial area.
Yeah.
You know, and then all of a sudden, we end up with them coming to the door, well, you waived it for this.
Yeah.
Right? So, um, I just, I want council to be very careful on how we take it on, and, but like I say, I do commend bylaw because they're, they're really trying to get things moving to get these done. But I think it's, we're really starting, and I, like I said, I apologize I wasn't here the, to offer this one, but I think there is ways that we can deal with it where there is a line drawn in the sand, and we put firm dates, because even if we go back to say you're gonna, you know, they can put their tipping fees on their taxes, and then, you know, or not on their taxes, but on their utilities, but utilities, at the end of the year, if utilities aren't paid, they don't want to, it could become a tax lien anyways. So it's a vicious cycle, but, um, you know, I do commend, like I said, I do commend bylaw on trying to be creative and trying to get these things moving, but it's not the town's responsibility, our, our responsibility is to, to, we have bylaws, and we got, got, there's stages in the bylaw for enforcement, and this has been going on on these properties for many, many years. It's not something that happened overnight. And so anyways, that's my submission.
Thank you, Cam, appreciate that. Um, on that note.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with the, uh, the process of the, uh, maintenance enforcement? Yes, thank you. I was just, I might stop working today, I'm sorry. That we proceed with the, uh, the current, uh, tax lien, um, applying our rule, so I was good.
Uh, your worship, oh, but I worded, um, the council, um, council makes a motion to that bylaw department continues with the enforcement of the municipal maintenance enforcement bylaw, uh, to all ends.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Great. Um, so then we have one more item on the agenda, um, which is a letter of support, um, we're being, the Air First Nation, I believe, has requested, uh, letter of support from us, so I'll just, um, read this. Um, it was addressed to Cam, but, um, I am reaching out on behalf of Catherine Deroge and LFM regarding a funding opportunity to improve rural rural transportation for the community. LFM recently purchased two twenty-four passenger buses, and using one of the buses wishes to initiate an intercommunity transportation initiative. We will be applying to the indigenous stream of the Rural Transportation Solutions Fund to fund staff wages, fuel subsidy, and O and M for a bus to use, to you, to use for daily bus route between the communities. This is to improve safety of members and community members between Upper Liard Two Mile Village area and Lower Post. We are looking to operate the route three times daily, Monday to Saturday, while looking at a daily run to Lower Post and back once a day, or maybe twice. This is to reduce hitchhiking and putting vulnerable members in a position of abduction along the Alaska Highway, improve community transportation, and allow marginalized members the opportunity to pick up groceries and access services. The route would stop at major points within Watson Lake, Upper Liard, and Two Mile at specific times. We would like to sit down and discuss a letter of support from the town for this initiative, and maybe do some route planning for maps for our submission. Please let us know if this is an initiative that town and town council would support with LFM for the community. Kind regards.
It's letter of support, I don't see why not.
Why you don't have a problem with that?
The only thing that I had was just make sure it's for all community members, but they sort, they say that and they're like, I should be able to ride the bus if I want to.
Yeah.
Like, that's all.
I mean, we can reiterate that, too.
But that's, it seems good.
I don't have a problem. Do we need a motion? A motion to initiate a.
To approve the letter of support for the transportation, rural transportation.
I'll second.
I think they actually want to sit down and discuss.
But, your worship, I think that can be dealt with in between the ministry.
Okay, okay.
I'll second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Can we add a ca, can we add a caveat to this letter? That, uh, we've fully support the letter of this transportation, rural transportation initiative. If you will kindly put up a sign that says no over light parking at the Watson Lake Hotel site.
That'll be their bus terminal. Yeah, that's gonna fly, your worship.
Why? Why not?
They're, they're birds and oranges. They're not the same.
I don't care.
You put it up.
I will.
Alright. Um, so we'll move on to council open forum.
I have something.
Sure, why don't you start?
Can we write a letter to LFM suggesting that there's no overnight parking at the Watson Lake Hotel site? I saw you roll your eyes, Lauren.
I did not. I looked up at Janice. Um, honestly, I can't tell if you're being serious or not, but if you are, I am not against it, just because I don't like the look of people squatting there. I think we do have, um, two RV parks right in the middle of town, um, that they're welcome to use, or there's campgrounds, um, all over the place, so, well, kind of, but I, I honestly don't love the idea of people squatting wherever they want. I don't think that there's garages there, I don't think there's services there, um, so.
I just, I just feel like the municipality's being taken advantage of there, and that I, there's other opportunities for people to stay. I am serious. I just would like to make it formal. I wanna put it in the, in the minutes that we are requesting that this happens, and that we try to write a letter as soon as possible, because the year is coming to an end, and it should be in place before the end of the summer.
So, because it is private property, are we requesting that they allow our bylaw to police that? Is that how that works?
All, all we're asking is that they put a no overnight parking sign up there.
Um, yeah, your worship, just for the record, uh, before I left on holidays, I was dealing with, uh, their executive director, Jerry Bruce, regarding the matter, and, um, originally, he was under the understanding that the property was owned by the Art First Nation, but it's not. It's still titled to the Art First Nation Development Corp, which is a private entity. But it's not, it's still titled to the Art First Nation Development Corp, which is a private entity. So they were trying to work through the back door to figure out um. Who could actually make that decision being it wasn't chief and council that it couldn't be that decision. So and since I've been back today, I haven't had a chance to touch base, but I, yeah, I agree if a letter went. To at least chief and council or the Art First Nation Development Corp, at least then there's something on record.
Yep. I would appreciate that. That'd be great. Thank you.
Alright.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Slager?
Um, with the new Northern Light Center, I went there and took my mother there and she was. Super impressed with the Northern Light Show and whatnot and um. He said, wasn't there a show once upon a time that showcased the various? Things that you could do and see around Watson Lake? And I thought, you know what? There was a video like that once upon a time, but I'm sure it was. You know, quite dated. And she said, well, what would you think about someone like, doesn't someone have a drone or? Could do or could put together a little welcome to Watson Lake? Five to ten minutes, uh, drone footage of Y Lake. Of Watson Lake, of the ski hill, of the rec center of the northern, well, I guess you're already there. Um. But like the different amenities that our town has to offer, so that people could take more advantages of local businesses within it. So my question would be, how would council feel about making such a video?
Um, your worship, um, for the record, we have been discussing that administration. And trying to work, reach out to other user groups to see if we can. Maybe sponsor or access funding to do that type of thing. Um, before I left on holidays, I was provided with um, a very fantastic video about the Cask. Uh, traditions and land guardians.
An hour long?
Uh, no, it's thirty minutes or something, or twenty-eight minutes, which fits in right with our stuff. It's uh, but I just got the pure lap that watches phenomenal. Um, they actually hired a phenomenal company to do it. Um, it's just a matter of us trying to figure out how we can bring it in as a promo type thing, but that would just be on Caska. That wouldn't be the rest of the community.
It could be like an intro, like you're almost like an intro, like pre-credits to a movie, almost you could do. Like where it's like, I don't know, three or four minutes and then it says, welcome to Watson Lake or something, man, and then it plays. We have trails, we have this, we have saunas, we have new showers, we have. Ball diamonds, we have curling rings, we have, you know, like, all these things.
No, I think it's it's fantastic idea. It's just a matter of trying to find the funding and the people to do it and. The tour season was probably gonna be over, but if we can have it lined up for next year.
Yeah.
And yes.
Yeah, that's I'm shooting for like next. April, May.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, nothing. I just was gonna ask about the environmental instructions stuff, but that's already been done, so.
Thanks. I don't have anything to say.
And is there anywhere else to put a sign in the sign port for us?
What do you mean, sorry?
Well, there. Do we have signs? Is there space available for people to put signs?
Yes.
There, okay.
There was um. I don't know how many signs were installed last fall, uh, the the extra posts. That are on the backside on the Watson Lake Hotel site.
Okay.
Yeah, just just further to that, to that, um, because people are using the trees unfortunately in some cert- some cases, so.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a struggle. We do have signage. Up there, your worship advising people if they put stuff on trees or or the yardway and stuff that um, it'll be removed and they still put up. So it's um, it's, it's, it's a never ending battle.
Cam, could I add one more thing? Since we are going on a a pretty extensive break at this point. Could we uh, well, can we get some updates some way somehow on the infrastructure? And maybe I think streetlight should happen and there's a couple other projects that are on the go that we're hoping to be done over the summer. Um, would be, can we get like a, I don't know. An email or like a breakdown or something like that and then over the next month?
Yes, your worship. Um, when I actually met with Tiffany and Shannon this morning, that was, those topics were. On the list of people that I need to reach out to this week. Uh, so highways regarding streetlights and also the cross pedestrian crosswalks. And then um, the the say the in-ground infrastructure, Francis Avenue and the Lit Station, and those are all. Um, items that I will update council in an email as soon as I know.
Um. Sorry.
That would just be, that'd be great, just so we, just so everybody's in the loop.
I agree with that. Um, and just sorry, something just popped in my head. Um, I think I can remember this before you left or while you were gone. But um, the. When we were briefed on the in-ground infrastructure and it said that the tender was um, awarded or.
No.
Something?
There was two to me.
It closed?
It closed.
It had closed, but it was gonna take ninety days or something crazy like that. Some crazy amount of time that would put us back into winter before they would make the decision. I just. I, if that's the case, like, I just hope that um, you will tell them that that is absolutely unacceptable.
So the under the Yukon government procurement pro- policy, they have sixty days.
Sixty days.
Sixty days to make the decision.
Which puts us in September.
Well, no, it it isn't because the fact that it's already been a month. So we're we're close, but um, the other issue that when I did speak with the infrastructure. Is the fact that the two companies that did submit bids are still working on projects from last year. So there's a whole, I won't, I won't know for sure until Thursday, but I'm definitely stressing that we need shovels in the ground, so. Yeah.
What's it for me?
Me as well.
Okay, so um.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Jump right in there. Um, we didn't speak anything about the uh, ten plaques. Have you heard anything about that, Cam?
Really worship, um, last I heard was that it was astronomically over budget. And Yukon Housing um, would had to go back to um. Like cabinet, but um.
Management?
Management board to see if they would approve the pricing. And I haven't heard anything since, but it's another one on my list for, I wanted updates for.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, gallery open forum. Um, what do we start with, Janice?
Um, I know you guys have talked about it before, but. You know, trying to get the tenders out of January to February so that closings are then. And then government has sixty days, so then. The work is actually starting in the spring, um, whatever happens.
So I, I mean, Cam, we can answer this, but I'm pretty sure that they did put some of them out in February.
Um. Well, the bids, the bids did go out, you know, the tender documents went out in February. Um, things did get held up on some of that stuff. Um, but yeah, no, the our. Our um. The plan was, and unfortunately, we're working with Yukon government. Um, everything was backed up across the board.
Yeah, it just seems that. Start double tip the ground in August.
Yeah.
But if it costs more to do anything at that point.
Yeah, yeah, but there is part of the scope of the work that's for this year. Um, was is um, just do even some of the small sections, because it was, it's a two-year. Work project that we knew was gonna be partial one year and then full steam the next. So there is work that can be completed this year, which needs to be done. To figure it sort of.
Thank you. Um, so we do have a couple of people in the Zoom gallery. Uh.
Yeah, so can you read that?
Um, I can read it from here. Uh, this is from Colleen. Um, hi, everyone. About flag pro- protocols. Most of the flags that are flying along the Alaska Highway are flags that belong to coun- countries. Like flying Canada flag, there are protocols about flying them in a certain order or at height. And what flag should be flying with their country flag. Saying that, I believe that. Any or all non-nation flags should be moved to a different location. I'm not against flying non-nation flags. Go ahead, just not there. Another suggestion is to have the Liar First Nation Caska flag flying at the town building. The town of Watson Lake should and normally acknowledges the land they live and work on. I understand there is an issue about landscaping and where to fly it, work on it. I said, I spoke with the re-elected chief Charlie and he sup- supports moving on this. So I. Honestly, I have never really thought about the um, as far as the flags on the. Like, well, I, thank you, Colleen, for starters. I honestly have never really thought about. Those flags at all before. I've never had anybody. Mention anything about them. I think that's something that we can take into consideration when we're, I don't know that we're in a position to be moving them around. This year, but I think that's something we can definitely take into consideration when we are um, talking about flag placement on for next season. And then as far as the um, LFN flag, I fo- fully support that. I've been in support of that for a long time, but I don't know what that looks like as far as us getting another flight call. Or where we'll put it, given that we just landscape the whole front. I think that's a conversation that needs to be had, but.
She said, she said, if I'm playing facts with Colleen, so.
Okay. Nice. Um, anyone else? No. So um. We don't have anything in camera, so I think that concludes our. Committee of the whole meeting for today. So I'm just looking for my motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll stick it in.
Perfect. Thanks, everyone.